Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wattsburg Area School District where we are student-centered and future-focused for a world-class education. The Board Work Session of June 8th is now called to order. There's one person that has signed up to address the Board this evening on the agenda. If there are any other citizens that would like to address the Board this evening for five minutes, I ask that you at this time use the Q&amp;A feature and send your name and your address to our business administrator who's running the meeting. With that, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Blazer.
President.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Bukovic.
Here.
Mrs. Pound.
Here.
Mr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here. Thank you. I would like to make the announcement that this Board met in executive session on June 1st at 7:00 PM for the purpose of a personnel matter related to the superintendent's annual evaluation. This Board also met in executive session prior to this meeting on June 8th at 6:00 PM for the purpose of a personnel matter related to the contract renewal of the business administrator and a personnel matter related to the instructional technology director position. Finally, the Board will meet in executive session on June 15th at 6:30 for the purpose of discussing the required Act 44 Annual Safety and Security Report. Carrying on with our agenda at this time, Mr. Berlin, any school reports for this week or next?
We'll have school reports for next week.
Okay. Thank you. We have a guest that had signed, one citizen that had signed up to address the Board this evening, and I don't see him on our call, Mr. Danny Carter. Danny, are you there? Okay, I don't see Mr. Carter joining us this evening. No one else has signed up to address the Board this evening, so we will continue with our agenda. That will bring us to the superintendent's report. Mr. Berlin. You're on mute, Mr. Berlin.
Thanks, Dr. Pushcheck. Mrs. Kelly, can you unshare the agenda for a minute? I'm just going to put up a couple bulleted points here. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay, so at the end of last week, very end of last week, the Department of Education released these guidelines for going back to school, what schools have to do to make that happen. So, in short, I mean, this is just some of the verbiage that came right out of the messages that were sent to us from the Department of Ed. But the bottom line is, if we want to offer in-person instruction, and we're either in the yellow or the green phase, as called by the governor, we need to develop a health and safety plan. And as you can see, it's guidelines for opening activities, and it should be tailored to each individual school district. Although I can tell you that the superintendents in Erie County, we're going to meet tomorrow for the purposes of seeing if we can come up with some common framework language, so all the county students and Erie students generally know what to expect, and teachers as well. But then, we'll take, we'll bring that back to each individual district, and we'll further tailor that to meet our situation, because obviously all of our districts are configured differently. The key thing here, though, is the plans have to be approved by the Board of Directors, and it also has to be submitted to PDE. I find it curious that they're not going to approve or disprove it, we just have to submit it to them. They're taking a pretty hands-off approach from that perspective. So what does this all mean? In thinking about this, this is going to, the plan has to outline, you know, how we're going to handle busing, how many kids are going to be in a room, do the kids wear masks, you know, what kind of sanitation protocols do you have? We have to, we have to have a tracking, a screening and checking protocol in place, you know, and these are some things that parents may feel strongly about. So, we don't have a July work session or board meeting, but I really think that we should schedule one, because approve it in July and give all of our parents and students time, you know, we can strip so they know what to expect when they come through their front doors, and they have ample time to ask questions of the staff, you know, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. There's just a lot of anxiety around this situation. So we could do that simply by adding a motion to the addendum, to an addendum next week to add a regular work session and board meeting on the second and third Mondays respectively in July. So that's really what I, and then we have to advertise it too, I didn't forget that, but I really think that would be prudent for us to do, so that everybody knows what takes, because I don't want surprises, and I think with everyone's anxiety levels understandably being elevated around this whole situation unprecedented, the more information we can get out to students and parents, the sooner the better.
Is there any Board discussion about adding a July work session and regular meeting?
I think it makes sense. If we wait until August, you know, if you think about those parents and those teachers, that would, yeah, for sure, he's right about the anxiety, I think. It makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so we will put on the agenda, the addendum for next week, the motion that Mr. Berlin has shared without objection. Thank you, Mr. Berlin.
Okay, and then, just an update on the stadium, they started staging some equipment. We've got some heavy digging equipment, they're going to start tearing into things tomorrow. So that's kind of exciting. I did have a talk with Russ, who is managing our project. He was the taller gentleman that presented way back, feels like it was, you know, 10 years ago now, but he said there is a possibility for a fifth change order. He said they rarely run into it, that's why, and you can't predict it, and what I'm talking about is unstable, non-compactable, or substandard earth, earth that needs to be treated with caps to make it stable. And he said, because of those reasons, that's why they recommend, you know, the contingency that we did set aside for these unexpected things. They haven't found anything yet, but they haven't started digging, and, you know, who knows? I mean, I'm sure, you know, some school districts, they'll raise a building and then bury it on the campus, but, you know, Seneca was built on this campus, unless there was work debris that was buried up in the football field area, but I doubt it. Thing that is more likely is, you know, this district is built on partially a wetland. So if we run into something, I think that's going to be it. But, you know, the good news, in talking to Eric, is that field is, has a high crown, you know, so it was very purposely shaped that way for drainage reasons, so hopefully we won't run into it. So where am I going with all this? I'd like to recommend that a motion be added to an addendum next week, that if this material would be removed and replaced, add a unit cost not to exceed the contingency. And Russ gave me a quote for that. Can you see that? No? I cannot. I got to pick a new document. Okay, so, here's the prices, and these are local contractors, remove and replace unsuitable material with 2A aggregate, or use some cement stabilization. So that's $89 for the aggregate replacement per cubic foot, and then for cement stabilization, that's $1.60 per square foot. So that would be my recommendation, because if they run into this stuff in between board meetings, it could bring things to a halt, and then that would cause us to get off track. So, I mean, essentially, we would be authorized to take care of this problem on a contingency.
Any Board discussion regarding this potential work order change? So then, without objection, we'll have that on the addendum for next week.
And that's all I have for my report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Moving on with the agenda, the Chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bending for the Business Administrators' Report. Mrs. Bending.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight, I have the General Fund Treasurers' Report. Cash in the Bank as of May 31st, $2,024,87,924.37. And Exhibit A1, the check's already written since the last board meeting totaling $110,161.45. The rest of the reports will be ready for next week's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Bending. Any questions from the Board for Mrs. Bending?
Andy, it's Julie. I have one question.
Yes, Mrs. Bukovic.
Vicky, I just wanted to know, did you get a refund yet back from Chuck to Cody for the seventh and eighth grade soccer team? He was the referee assigner that we had to pay, and then there was no season?
I don't know the answer to that. I think he may be on the bill list for next week, but I will check it out and let you know for sure.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board for Mrs. Bending?
This is Tara.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
The postage number, I can't remember what it was now, because we're not on that page anymore. What was that for?
The bill that goes to the postal service?
Yes.
It's $1,088, and that is just to replenish the postage meter so that we can send out district mail. So we've been typically, whatever we use during the month, we replenish it, so that we always have a balance in our postage meter, and that was just what we've used for mailings up through this month. And there was a mass mailing for some special ed information and some other documents that have gone out recently.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board for Mrs. Bending this evening? Hearing none. Thank you, Mrs. Bending, for your Business Administrators' Report. Moving along with the agenda, there's nothing under legal advisement for next week. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushcheck for Finance. Mr. Pushcheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items for the agenda next week. F1, we'll be asking the Board to approve the monthly budgetary transfer from the Budget versus Actual Report as outlined. F2, we'll be looking to adopt the General Fund Budget for the 2021 fiscal year in the amount of $25,917,477 as outlined. F3, regarding the real property tax, there'll be a resolution that the Wattsburg Area Board of School Directors does hereby levy for the school fiscal year, July 1, 2020, to and including June 30, 2021, on each dollar of the total assessment of all real property in the Wattsburg Area School District comprised of the borough of Wattsburg and townships of Amity, Green, Greenfield, and Vanango, in the amount of $19,778.6 for $1,977.86 on each $100,000 of assessed valuation of taxable property for general school purposes and the payment of teacher salaries and rentals to school authorities. And just to add, this amount reflects no increase from the prior 1920 fiscal year.
So I'd just like to remind the Board and our citizens that there is no tax increase proposed. Even before COVID hit, this Board and administration worked hard to not have a tax increase on the community, at the same time providing wonderful opportunities for our students, academic and extracurricular. So kudos to the administration for working hard for getting us to this point, and then let's hope that we can weather the COVID storm now, so, but please be reminded, this reflects no tax increase. Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck. Please continue.
Moving on to F4, regarding the per capita tax, we'll be looking for the Board to approve a resolution that the Wattsburg Area Board of School Directors hereby reenacts upon the residents and/or inhabitants of the Wattsburg Area School District 19 years of age and older within the school district a per capita tax in the amount of $5 as provided for in the public school code of 1949 Section 679 as amended during the period July 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. F5, regarding the Act 511 per capita tax, the Board will be asked to approve a resolution that the Wattsburg Area Board of School Directors hereby reenacts upon the residents and/or inhabitants of the Wattsburg Area School District 19 years of age and older within the public, within the school district a per capita tax in the amount of $5 as provided for in the public law 1257 dated December 31, 1965 as amended, commonly referred to as the Act 511 or the Local Tax Enabling Act 53 PS Section 624.101 and what follows during the period July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. F6, regarding the earned income tax, the Board will be asked to approve a resolution that the Wattsburg Area Board of School Directors hereby reenacts and continues an earned income tax to be levied in the amount of 1% on salaries, wages, commissions, and other compensation earned during the period July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021 on all residents of the Wattsburg Area School District who have attained the age of 18 years and older and on the net profits earned during said periods from business, professions, or other activities conducted by residents of the said district in accordance with public law 1257 dated December 31, 1965 as amended, commonly referred to as the Act 511 or the Local Tax Enabling Act 53 PS Section 6924.101 and what follows. F7, regarding the Realty Transfer Tax, the Board will be asked to approve a resolution that the Wattsburg Area Board of School Directors hereby reenacts and continues a Realty Transfer Tax to be levied in the amount of 1% on transfers beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021 of real property or any interest in real property situated within the Wattsburg Area School District in accordance with public law 1257 dated December 31, 1965 as amended, commonly referred to as Act 511 or the Local Tax Enabling Act 53 PS Section 6924.101 and as follows. F8, regarding the Local Services Tax, the Board will be asked to approve a resolution that the Wattsburg Area Board of School Directors hereby reenacts upon the privilege of engaging in an occupation within the limits of the Wattsburg Area School District who have attained the age of 18 years and older a local services tax in the amount of $10 as provided in the Local Tax Enabling Act 53 PS Section 6924.101 and as follows during the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. F9, regarding the Act 1 Exclusion Resolution, the Board will be asked to approve the Act 1 Exclusion Resolution, Homestead/Farmstead as outlined.
So, Mr. Pushcheck, if I could just pause you there for a quick moment. For some of the Board members that may have not seen all of these huge paragraphs, what we're doing logistically is, we approve how the revenue streams of the budget, and we do that first, and then, we approve budget, and then we approve the funding mechanism to support that budget, in that sense. But that's what all that is, those are all the various funding mechanisms locally, and that will feed into the budget to support it, along with state's contribution. And it's a 5% split.
Andy, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
Can you go back up to, I probably started F5, F6 maybe? So all of these, the earned income and all of these that say "reenact," have we always done these, or we didn't, and we want to do them now? I guess the "reenact" word is confusing me, like, I feel like we've never done it, and now we're all of a sudden putting it into play.
Nope, these have been enacted every year, and each year we reenact them to continue.
Gotcha. Okay.
Sure.
You know, and I might add, if we get into trouble, even on the revenue side, it most likely will be from the earned income tax related to unemployment. So it's just going to be a matter of how fast the economy starts to recover, as to how short we are, but in the final version of the budget, and Vicky could speak to this if you want more questions, you know, we did allocate some funds in anticipation of being short. We set aside some funds in anticipation of income tax being short, and hopefully it's enough to keep us out of a rut.
Okay, Mr. Pushcheck, you can continue, please.
Okay. Next, F10, regarding the food service lunch prices for the 2021 school year, to approve the lunch prices for the 2021 school year as follows, and just to point out, reflecting this is no change from the previous year. Then F11 and 12, the new accounting clerk, F11, to reallocate the district's credit limit with Northwest to include Susan Huff, the accounting clerk, with a $5,000 credit limit. And then F12, to also further and additionally authorize Susan Huff to transfer funds and make wire transfers on behalf of the district up to $2 million.
Mrs. Bending, could you speak to these two items in particular? Any oversight that you would have, please?
Sure. So both of these items are related to the retiring of DRC Frontera, the previous accounting clerk, who had a $5,000 credit limit on a credit card for the district purposes and had the ability to transfer funds and wire transfers up to $2 million. So with her retirement and the hiring of Susan Huff, the new accounting clerk, we're just reassigning, or asking this to be reassigned to Susan. Both of the credit limit is, it is the district credit card, and there is approval processes for people to be able to use it. We only use it in instances where purchases have to be made online, and they don't accept purchase orders. So those are, they all go through myself, and those purchases are done and approved through the requisition and purchase order process. So that's for that. And then the funds transfers, to be able to transfer money from the General Fund Municipal Fund to the General Fund Checking Account in order to make payments, those all go through an online approval process. When she goes to the bank website to make the transfer and/or a wire transfer, I get an electronic notification. She drafts the transfer, and then it has to make my approval before the transfer is actually made. So there's a two-step approval process for those transfers.
Okay, thank you. I know there were a lot of items presented under Finance. Let's take some time to answer any questions the Board might have at this time for the 12 items listed under Finance. And go ahead, Mr. Paris.
This Susan Huff, was she bonded when she was hired? Does she carry, like, insurance?
She was not. Mr. Berlin and I did talk about that, and I'm looking into getting that taken care of.
So, if we are going to allow $2 million transfers, I would think maybe until she's bonded, we could lower that? Is there any thought to that?
Well, Mrs. Bending says she has to approve the transfer, so Susan's not going to be doing it by herself.
I have a quick comment, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Pushcheck.
Just as a question to Vicky, you may not be able to answer this right now, but I got to think, under the district's liability policy, there's some type of employee protection regarding something similar to a bond, because I think you would have to, you would have to have that. I mean, you're, there's freedom to, you know, bond as much as you want above that, but you could check that, because I got to think there's something already there. It's highly unusual for, you know, an insurance company to write a liability policy without any, you know, bonding type things on an employee. But that's all. Thanks.
Mr. President, I have a question.
One moment. Mr. Paris, anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paris. Yes, Mr. Blazer.
The question is about the food services, lunch prices that we're approving. I guess, two-part question. One, how are these calculated? Does the nutrition group tell us what they believe is a fair cost, so that we aren't losing funds? I know that they talked in our discussion of renegotiating or re-upping their contract about some anticipated increases in food costs next year due to COVID shortages. And then the second question is, I assume these are the full-price costs, so if an individual or family was low-income, then they possibly would have a lower cost? Is that accurate?
You are correct. So these are for paid students, and then the reduced lunch and breakfast costs, I think it's 40 cents, and then free is obviously free. And there is a lunch price calculation tool that PDE publishes, and we're supposed to do this equity formulation to decide whether or not we need to raise lunch prices, because we have to try and reach the amount that's designated for reimbursement. There's a formula for that. But our method for not raising lunch prices this year is because not knowing the financial abilities of our families in our district, we didn't want to raise lunch prices and have an extra burden on that. So we're just leaving them the same this year, and that was also a recommendation by the nutrition group, was to leave them the same. So that's where we're at.
Okay, Mr. Blazer? Okay. Any other questions under Finance tonight from the Board? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck. We will have all those items on the agenda for next week. Chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items tonight. B1, the District Paving Bid Award, and B2, Field Changes, Change Order Number Three and Four. And will we wait for Number Five for the addendum?
Yes, that'll be on the addendum for next week.
Add those items, please.
Any questions or discussion on the District Paving Bid Award and the Athletic Field Change Orders?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Paris.
Would it be possible to have the stadium group available next week to answer questions? I'm sure they wouldn't want to do that, Josh. I can give them a call.
I just, I saw the plans for the stormwater, and I just had questions on the retention pond. Is that going to be fenced? Is that going to be open? And then, the way they're distributing the stormwater, and I know it's probably not their decision, but it looks like a maintenance headache with the sprinklers, and then I have some grading questions as well.
Okay, so, yeah, other question, because there's like a number of players. I want to make sure I get the right people for the meeting, because Stunned, they subbed out the drainage issue to a local company here, which their name escapes me at the moment. But I'll see if I can get the guy that actually designed the drainage, he can tell you why it had to be done that way. The short answer is Seneca was built on a wetland.
I understand.
Yeah, Seneca was built on a wetland. But those are good questions, and the same questions about the sprinklers, but we'll try to get those folks lined up.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if that might be more appropriate for a committee meeting than in the general meeting? Or would you just like to have?
Yeah, I mean, typically, I think typically, for this kind of, a committee meeting is appropriate, so we could, we get out of Building and Grounds meetings, so we're not.
I'm okay with that. I just, I don't think it's going to hold up voting for it. I just, I would like some answers on, it just, there's a lot of changes there from the original plan.
Well, does the whole board have an interest in hearing this, or does Josh, with his construction background, have the most interest that he could just give them a call? Would the board be opposed to that? Or a conference call with Mr. Berlin and Mr. Paris?
I trust Josh.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea for Josh to be involved in that.
As the chairperson of Buildings and Grounds, I see no reason you can't have a conference call with Mr. Berlin and the company.
That's fair.
And then maybe if you wanted to, you could just give us a quick report out next week.
Sure.
Is there anyone opposed to that?
I'm not opposed. I do have one other question that maybe Josh could just answer or get an answer for us, and
Sure, Mr. Blazer.
Sorry, Mr. Berlin might know the answer to this. So, in our addendum, change order number five, we're indicating that's covered under contingency, or maybe it was the change order number three. I guess my question is, do we still have plenty of contingency, or are all these change orders heating it up, and is that going to affect the overall budget?
Good question, Mr. Berlin. Mr. Berlin, frozen. Mrs. Bendig, can you speak to the contingency question?
Yes. So, if you remember, at the beginning of the project, we allocated $310,000 to a contingency plan as recommended, 10% of the project. I believe we're into like $150,000 of that at this point. So, we still have plenty of contingency moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the two items under Buildings and Grounds? And we thank you.
I would just comment that the prices for the $89 that they're showing for changes to the fill, I think that's a very reasonable price. So, I, you know, I didn't see anything out of line there.
Thank you, Mr. Paris, and thank you for your willingness to meet with them. Okay, moving on. The chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for Personnel. Mr. Blazer?
Thank you, Mr. President. A number of items under Personnel to add to the agenda for next week. P1 is to accept the following resignations, as listed out there, Noel Naughton, David Knight, Stephanie Guild, and Lisa Kimble. P2, to approve the sabbatical leave for Todd Talbot. P3, to approve the following summer help, Mackenzie Jones, Noah Beldon, and Christopher Lind. P4, to approve extended school year for Samantha, I'm going to butcher her last name, as a S Y teacher. P5, the athletic trainer, so to approve the athletic trainer agreement with the Regional Health Service and the Wasburg Area School District for certified athletic trainer services. I guess I do have a question on that, which might fall into discussion about athletics. So, do you want me to stop there or keep going?
If it relates to the athletic trainer agreement, now's the time, sure.
So, the question would be for that, and maybe similarly, when we get to talking about coaches' approvals, what happens if we approve this and athletic services don't happen? Are we paying a set fee? Are we paying for only if we use the service? So, as an example, if a fall sport or multiple would not be able to happen due to COVID, how does that affect this agreement? Can you answer that, Vicki?
Mrs. Bendig?
This is a continuation of the agreement that we already have. The trainer is contracted and serves all of our athletics. So, even if there's one athletic program that's happening, she would be on campus and at our disposal as needed. So, this, we, she, this is a contracted service. It's a, it doesn't cover her entire salary. It's a, it's a service that the UPMC provides for us. So, did that answer your question? I mean, we would still, we would still be paying her.
So, if we
We're paying the contract.
We're paying an hourly rate, so to speak, and so therefore, no. So, therefore, if we had only, you know, if we had no sports, we would not use this contract until sports would be allowed to resume?
No, she would be, the contract would stand, and we would be paying the contract whether or not sports resumed or not.
But it doesn't preclude us from asking them to prorate it, if they're not, you know, and we've worked with them for years. So, I think that's a possibility. The governor's made it pretty clear that they want school back in session. In fact, in the school finance bill that passed last week, it actually says in it, all schools will get in 180 days of schooling. So, I think they were having, the PA General Assembly was having some buyer's remorse regarding that part of the disaster bill that they passed, saying that all school employees get paid regardless. I don't see them doing that again, because I know they caught a lot of heat on that. So, that's just, that's another piece of, you know, I think of answering your question. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. P6 is to approve the superintendent's 2019-2020 Annual Performance Evaluation. P7, appointments, to approve the following appointments, Amanda Eulnick, Samantha, again, I'm going to butcher her name, Michael Rimdeas. And P8, job descriptions, to approve the revised job descriptions as follows. So, the revised descriptions for the business administrator, client technology specialist, technology systems and service administrator, the technology systems and networks specialist, and the PIMS and child accounting coordinator. P9, to approve the revised Act 93 agreement for technology systems and services administrator. P10, to approve the Wasburg Area School District organizational chart, as outlined in the attachment. P11, attendance at meetings, to approve attendance for travel reimbursement for all PDE-related meetings and the following meetings listed for the 2021 school year. And that is all.
Another large list for June under Personnel. Are there any questions regarding those?
I had a question.
Items, yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
So, Todd Talbot, in the approval for a sabbatical, is he currently on sabbatical? And we're just extending the sabbatical, or, because I know currently he's not?
Is that something we're able to discuss, Mr. Berlin, or no?
No, I can tell you that we approved a semester sabbatical for him, I think it was last January, this past January. And if you've worked in Pennsylvania for 10 years, and you fit one of the eligible categories, like recovering for medical reasons, for example, you're entitled to a full year, two semesters sabbatical leave at half pay, but they don't have to be consecutive, but they do have to be used within a two-year time period.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Mr. Paris?
The attendance to meetings, we haven't paid anything for these meetings yet, have we? I mean, what is, what's the likelihood that these are even going to go through this year?
You mean all these, the meetings that all the administrators attend?
Yeah, won't they just be Zoom meetings?
They'll probably be Zoom meetings. But in the case that they aren't, the cost is just mileage reimbursement.
Okay, so you didn't, like, pay fees to go hear speakers or anything that wouldn't be refunded?
Yeah, I mean, for the, I mean, 99% of the time, these meetings are organized under the School Improvement Services branch of the IU5, and it's covered under what's called our, you know, our basic contribution to them, which it's not much. It's about $36,000. We pay the IU, we're required to pay the IU by school code. And then, these are some of the services they provide as a result.
Thank you.
The renewal of the business administrator's contract under Personnel?
Andy, I have a couple of questions. This is Tara.
Okay, Tara, one moment, please, till we figure out the business administrator's renewal.
I didn't see that. Would it be on the addendum?
You want it put on the addendum, correct?
Is that most appropriate, Mr. Berlin?
Yeah, could you repeat that again?
Yeah, I was asking, I was asking about Mrs. Bendig's business administrator contract renewal. I don't see it on the agenda. Would we place that on the addendum?
Yep, that'll be placed on the addendum.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you could make a verbal note right now to place it on the agenda, since we're creating next week's agenda.
Is anyone opposed to adding the business administrator's contract renewal to the agenda?
I think it looks more appropriate to be on the actual agenda than the addendum.
Okay. Mrs. Newfer, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir. I will put it in there.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Pound?
Back up to the beginning, the first one, I think, with the resignations for folks. And I think I probably say, I sound like a broken record, but do we know why all of these people are leaving? I know we talked about Mr. Knight, but it seems like this is like a revolving door. All of a sudden, people leaving the district. It just concerns me that we're losing top talent when we don't really need to be.
Yeah, I agree with you. And, I mean, I can be, I can be pretty to the point. It has, Mill Creek School District, for years, they steal our people, because they're such a difference in pay. And like I explained last month, you know, we started addressing that with this contract that we just settled in November. We did some compaction and brought the first, the first-year salary step up. And we, you know, every time we come back to that contract, we're going to have to work on that a little bit at a time. Oh, and the other thing is, both these girls, ladies, they went to McDowell, and they live in, they live in Mill Creek, and they said it's been their dream to teach at McDowell. Those are the two reasons that I find teachers leave, and it's been pretty consistent in all three school districts I've worked in. You know, they either want to go back to their home school, or, you know, they're, they might be from somewhere a little bit farther away, like maybe they live in Corey or Fairview, and they get a chance to work there closer to their home. Those are the two primary reasons, and money's actually third down on the West.
Okay. And then, for the summer help, what are they really actually going to be doing during the summer? Like, what are the activities that these folks are doing?
Well, there's a lot of maintenance tasks in the summer that we don't have in the winter, like mowing grass. So, a lot of times, the summer help and maintenance ends up working on the grounds, so that our three maintenance people and Eric can attend the technical problems, you know, while the school is closed. That's a time to fix problems that can't be fixed when school's in session. And then, the summer technology help, we have about 1,600 laptops that need to be manhandled, physically manhandled and reimaged. There's new equipment that we're buying that needs to be set up. So, that's primarily what those folks do, so that our regular IT people can be working on the more complicated project.
And then, next question is around the athletic director or athletic trainer contract. Is, I agree, is there a way that we can ask for that to be prorated or something, because she's going to be used minimally, and that's a lot of money to go through when she's not being used much?
Sure, I think that's always a possibility, that the administration would look into that.
Okay, and then last question is on all the meetings that are happening, like Josh was saying. What is the $36,000 for, I guess? That's a lot of money, just to go to meetings.
Yeah, so IUs are funded through all the local school districts, and there's a formula that dictates how much we have to pay the IU, and it's based on the size of your school student enrollment. There's a formula. So, that's not optional, and these are just some of the services that they provide for us. We also get a certain amount of professional development hours, and we can call on their experts to come in, and we can use them on our professional development days. It is a lot of money. I don't think we really get the value for our dollar, but on the other hand, we don't have a choice. It's a Pennsylvania school code mandate.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Any other questions for Personnel? Hearing none. Those 11 items will be on the agenda for next week's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Blazer. The chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for Policy. Mrs. Farrell?
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. There are two items that I am asking to have added to the agenda for next week. The first is the second reading of the below policies, and the second item is PL2, which is the administrative guidelines, and that is to approve the administrative guidelines for Policy 810 as outlined.
Okay, any questions on the second reading of the policies or the guideline? Hearing none, those will be added next week. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mrs. Julie Pikewicz for Curriculum. Mrs. Pikewicz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have five items under curriculum to be moved to next week's agenda. C1, to approve the special education transition operating agreement as outlined. C2, to approve the pilot of StudySync at the high school level for next school year. C3, the honor distinction, to approve the addition of the honors distinction to seventh and eighth grade English beginning this fall. C4, to approve the implementation of personal finance course for the high school this school year. And C5, the Pear Deck and Loom, to approve the purchase of that program as outlined. And that's all I have for today.
Five items under curriculum. Any questions or discussion?
I do.
Yes, Mrs. Pikewicz?
I just wondered if Becca would be able to talk about the
I just wondered if Becca would be able to talk about the Pear Deck online learning? Okay.
Yes, so one that, sorry, that we're looking at for starting off in the fall is how to better streamline the team's experience for families and students. And in doing so, looking at providing consistent programming options for teachers to use to instruct. So Pear Deck is an add-on to PowerPoint that allows it to be more interactive. So students, teachers can essentially use PowerPoint slides as assessments and to use for instructional purposes for students. And Loom allows teachers to record lessons. There's also, from my understanding, a lot more immersive tools. So students that may struggle with reading, there's read aloud options for directions and for problems and things like that. So these two, if approved, we would look at providing professional development on these two tools for teachers in preparation for potential online learning in the fall.
Can I add to that?
Mr. O'Donnell.
So first of all, Pear Deck is a great thing, and it has wonderful integration with teams, which our teachers are doing. So if they, when my daughter was doing something else, Pear Deck has a competitor product. And when she was trying to use that called NearPod, it was not as good. So that's a good choice. I'm just, $3,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money. Are you purchasing, you know, a certain amount of licenses for the Pear Deck?
So the Pear Deck is actually, I want to say closer to eight or 9,000. That's part of the link to Pear Deck. The 3,000 is for Loom. And Loom might not even be that expensive. As I was doing some additional research, it appears that they're providing free licensing to teachers, including for this upcoming school year. So the, the cost is for Loom not to exceed because we don't have a quote yet from that company. For Pear Deck, like I said, it's going to be more, that includes the licenses as well as professional development for teachers.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Pushak, this is Amanda. I have a question.
Yes, Amanda, just one moment, please. Mrs. Kelly, just so everyone knows, there's two parts to C5. The purchase of Pear Deck, if they would click on the hyperlink, that's a separate item than the $3,000 for Loom.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Farrell, go ahead.
I just wonder, do either Pear Deck or Loom help to address the situation of elementary kids trying to use a mouse to write? So what is the filling capabilities, I guess, with either of those?
It would still, my understanding is there, there's still going to be typing involved or the use of a mouse if they do not have some type of touchscreen. However, there are opportunities for teacher or for students to complete work on paper and then snap pictures and provide that work to the teachers via email. We're also looking at CSO for K1 and 2, which provides more interactive tools for students to submit work.
Very good. Thank you.
And then, Mrs. Kelly, will students, should we be doing any type of remote learning in the fall? Have access to one of our machines that is a touchscreen? And they could certainly have a stylus on with which to write on the screen.
Right, so one thing that we're looking at, we do have the tablets now in the early grade levels. And so looking at how to utilize those more effectively for, for learning as opposed to passing out laptops. So those are discussions we've been having with the tech integrators and IT.
Thank you. Any other questions on the five curriculum items?
I do. This is Julie.
Yes, Mrs. Pekovic?
Mrs. Kelly, I just, I just have a concern. If we end up going back and forth between being in school and being online, do you feel like the teachers will be prepared that there is no gap in between, like the learning for the kids? So if, you know what I mean? Like, will they be ready for this?
Right, so we have a couple of things kind of in the works to get them prepared and hopefully get classrooms up and running with a team for our third through 12th grade and CSO with our K1, 2. So if we do come back to school face to face and we're able to see students in the classrooms at the start of the year, the goal would be to have teams up and running even at that point. So teachers could use teams to begin to help students become more comfortable with them and navigating them and providing some instruction on where to find assignments. So that if we were to move to a remote learning situation, again, at some time throughout, you know, at some point throughout the course of the school year, students would already be familiar, teachers would already have some degree of content. We've also talked about what types of activities we may do in the fall or that teachers may do to get to know their students on a digital platform. So, you know, if we're not able to return face to face in the fall, teachers for the first time ever will, will be required to instruct students they haven't met in person. And so what types of activities on a digital platform could they do in order to get their, to know their students a little in that regard? And the reason we're looking at Pear Deck and Loom as opposed to some type of online learning platform like Engenuity, which provides canned courses, is so that there is continuity in what the teachers are using to educate their students. It's their content that they're able to share through Pear Deck, through Loom. And we're not trying to bounce back and forth between what they're learning in the classroom and then what a canned program has to offer.
That makes sense. So, okay, you feel pretty good that teachers will be more confident in going back and forth and being prepared with all of their lessons with the kids?
Yes.
Yeah, I can add, you know, we have another iron in the fire. Beck, Mrs. Kelly and I met with the WEA officers this morning to talk about the possibility of having them use some of their and trade some of their in-service time that's already in the calendar and bring them in earlier, like in July, beginning of August, so that we can do the training, you know. I don't want to wait till the in-service days right before school starts to throw this on the teacher. So we want to get them prepared and have, so they have a good month and a week or so before, you know, they're facing kids. So they'll have, they'll have time to work on their online learning platform.
That sounds great. And then the other thing was, this would be okay for, say, like, you know, there's a handful of kids or more, unfortunately, that are going to get the COVID. And if they're out, say, two weeks, three weeks, who knows, you know, when they come back, they would be able to go online and use this and they'd be right with the class, like, learning the same things. Is that the idea as well?
Well, eventually, the, the struggle with teachers teaching in the classroom is, you know, planning for virtual instruction and then planning for instruction that's in the classroom because it looks a little different. So we want to provide opportunities for students to be able to access online tools while in the classroom. But they're not necessarily going to have their entire curriculum available online as we move throughout the course of the school year. You know, depending on whether it's face-to-face instruction or it's virtual instruction, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. However, I just think maybe we should think a little bit further about that plan just because if the whole school still is at school, but you have a chunk of kids out, they're not going to be out for one or two days. You know, it's going to be maybe, unfortunately, maybe a lengthier time. So I was just thinking about those kids, the ones that might be out for several weeks.
Right.
But that's all. I mean, one suggestion was that there, there could be recording. The teachers could record themselves and post it, but that's a whole nother ballgame. But, okay, thanks.
I'd like to, the real nice thing about Pear Deck is that a teacher, if they were to have a Zoom classroom, the teacher could be lecturing to their students remotely, and the students use the Pear Deck to put in their responses, and the teacher gets their responses right away and can have interaction with all of the kids in real time. And so that, that tool opens it up for what you're suggesting. So it would be, it would be a good investment because it opens it up even if we went further down the path.
And everyone can now see what the struggle is to prepare a plan to submit that's going to accommodate all of these different situations. So this is, we're going to need some flexibility from parents, teachers, students to see, I mean, we may put a plan together in July, it may change before we open up in August, and we have to be as prepared and ready for that as possible. So I think, you know, let's, let's plan for the worst and hope for the best. And then where's the middle ground where we could have some type of, you know, hybrid system where there is opportunities for, for distance learning? Because I imagine there's going to be families that don't want to send their kids back at all. And we're going to accommodate them. So a lot, a lot, a lot is going to be, you know, dependent upon our plan, and then the plan may change. So these are all good things to talk about and to think about. Anything else under curriculum?
I'd just like to thank you for C4, having personal finance be in the 2021 school year. Thanks for that.
Okay, thank you. Final call. Five items under curriculum. Anything else? Okay, those five items will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for Technology. Mrs. Pound?
Thank you. I have nothing under technology. This go around.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Chair recognizes Mr. Steve O'Donnell for Transportation. Mr. O.
Nothing on the agenda for transportation.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Chair recognizes Mr. Shawn Mattson for Athletic and Extracurricular. Mr. Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items this evening under Athletic and Extracurricular. AE1 is the extracurricular resignation, to accept the resignation of Derek Peterman as stage coordinator effective May 19th, 2020. And then AE2 is the extracurricular appointments, to approve the extracurricular appointments for the 2020, 2021 school year as outlined. And AE3, the athletic appointments, to approve the fall coaching appointments for the 2020, 2021 school year as outlined. And that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any questions or discussion on the three items under Athletic and Extracurricular?
This is Tara. I don't have any questions, but can we bring those up just for the public to see? The links?
Well, Mrs. Kelly, work her magic. She's only working on one screen, but she can do it.
I do have a question.
Mr. Blazer?
So similar to our discussion about the athletic trainer agreements, if, if we approve, just as an example, the slate of football coaches and are not able to have a football season, I know we're working in the direction and hopeful that we don't face that, but are these stipends only if the services are provided?
You're on mute, Mr. Berlin?
Sorry. Similar to what we were talking about before, short of the legislative, legislative body mandating it, I, I don't see that as a possibility. In other words, we'd be able to prorate them because that legislation most likely won't be there. Or if nothing happens at all, we could do similar to what Northeast did and just rescind all the assignments.
And then similarly, I saw, I think, in one of your updates that PIAA has yet to release. It sounded like guidance, but is there anything being worked on by Mr. Carter? I know that, you know, the, a lot of these things start happening before school even starts. So as far as trainings, practices, what's going to be allowed on campus? Do we have a game plan?
Yeah, so because we use UPMC to supply our athletic trainer, we have access to all of their resources. So Steve had a meeting with UPMC and other schools that use them, and they produced some pretty significant, you know, back to sports guidelines. You know, what, what we have to do as a district to keep athletes safe and what to do if you do have an outbreak. They're pretty extensive documents. I mean, if you're interested, I could send them around to everybody. But suffice to say, you know, we're going to have a plan if, if things get going in July 1st, which I really think everyone's hoping for that. And the guidelines I saw, you know, when you're doing open gym, I think, I think it's possible, at least in the early stages, to maintain social distancing. So I'd really hate to be in a position where July 1st comes and we don't have any coaches approved.
And I apologize. There was someone at the door, and so my dogs were barking very loudly. I did not hear what Tara's request was.
She had just asked to put the appointments up on the screen, and someone did that in your absence.
Oh, I, yeah, okay.
Any other questions about the three items for Athletic or Extracurricular?
I have a couple of questions, Andy.
Yes, Mrs. Pound?
For, so can you, Ken, can you share the documentation on the guidelines for all the sports starting that you were just talking about? I would like to see that. And then I had a question, and I'll just left my brain. For the, oh, for all of the coaches, really, not just fall coming up, but do we evaluate? How do we evaluate the coaches? Because they're paid. And do we get feedback from the, the kids, the athletes and the parents? How do we know that they're doing the, the right job? They're adding value, the kids are getting what they need? How does that work?
Mr. Berlin, could you run us through the process?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should have Steve Carter speak to that. But many years ago, the board and the administration developed a coach evaluation tool, which is used on every coach. But at the moment, I don't know exactly what's on it. I haven't looked at it in a long time. But all coaches are evaluated. There's a process that was collaboratively developed.
Okay, I'd be interested to see that if we're getting feedback from the parents and the students as well, the athletes.
All right.
Athletic and Extracurricular?
I'm still searching my email here. Hold on one second.
Okay.
President, I do have a question while he's doing that, if it's okay?
Okay, I'm going to share the screen. Can I share the screen?
Hold on, Mr. Mattson. We'll circle back to you.
No problem.
So you can see that we're going to have to put a task force together. And these are the people that are suggested. Here's the social distancing guidelines for athletes. The busing guidelines, you know, they're saying use charter buses or put kids in seats, every other seat. I think that's going to be a challenge for the entire air state, every athletic program or extracurricular programs that use buses. But that's what the CDC recommendation is at this time. And then there's a, a component where we have to build in for pre-participation exams. You know, some, some pre-screening for COVID, see if they've had it or perhaps may have been exposed. And then there's daily screenings for students. I might add that, that these guidelines are flowing into the recommended PDE guidelines that we're going to be working on with the superintendent group tomorrow. So I can tell you that our, our school plan is going to look very similar to this because we're following the same overarching CDC guidelines.
Can we share this on the website so everybody can see it? I think the public would want to see this as well.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I know the PDE.
For the, like, contact sports, that's almost impossible.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. Until they ease up on these guidelines or change them a little bit, I mean, it, it's, it's really going to be difficult to come back to school full-time. Because right now, the recommendation is 12 kids per bus. We have 25 buses times. We have 25 buses times the 12 kids that you can fill in each bus. So you can get 300 kids to the campus at a time. In the budget, we have four bus runs daily, so we could conceivably get one school into the into the building on one day, right? And then bring in another school on the other day while the other kids are at home. But I'm I'm not panicking yet because sooner or later, the people that made these guidelines, I can tell you, they're not familiar with how schools operate. Schools are extremely complicated systems with a lot of subsystems. So I'm just waiting for these guidelines to collide with the reality of our economy can't open up because most families have a two-income budget. And they rely on K-12 schools to not only teach their children, but to ensure that they're safe all day while they go to work. So I, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I kind of think there's going to be a readjustment here or a reckoning or a change in some of the messaging. So I'll post these on the website, though.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. We didn't forget about you. Mr. Mattson, your question? You're on mute.
Let's see, it's that big white button down there on the left.
Can I ask a quick question while we wait?
Sure.
Ken, what are the, so it's clear when you look at these PDE guidelines, which are public, and I saw them, you know, people were sharing them in social media even. And I read through the whole thing and realized, well, I can't imagine that our district can even open, especially when you look at transportation. Are there things that the superintendents, because I know you guys are meeting tomorrow, are there things you guys are doing to talk to the politicians who are writing this stuff?
Yeah, yes. We do that through PASA collectively, all the all the superintendents that pay into PASA membership. PASA hires a full-time lobbyist. So these things are getting communicated to these lawmakers. And then we've been directly communicating via regular Zoom meetings with the Secretary of Education. Because, you know, he's overall responsible for coming up with a plan that is palatable. His position is difficult. The plan he comes up with has to be palatable to the to the politicians in charge, but it also has to be compatible with the CDC. And then, but the third rung is it has to be operable. And right now, we have a politically acceptable solution. We have a CDC acceptable solution, but we do not have an operable solution. I mean, short, I saw an article today, it was another superintendent, it sounded like something I would say. He said, I have to quadruple my busing fleet to get all the kids on campus in one day. You know, which is the calculation I came to within about two seconds of looking at that document. So even if you, even if there were enough buses in the country to buy, you know, to to quadruple everyone's bus fleet, you can't get that many bus drivers because we have a national shortage of bus drivers. So, you know, hence that's, I'm just kind of coming full circle to my comments a few minutes ago that pretty soon, the economy is going to collide with these guidelines.
You are being able to take in your question for us?
He texted me his question because he can't figure out what's going on. He can hear us.
Tara, you can act as a proxy for Mr. Mattson. Go ahead.
There you go. His question is, is there's going to, there are going to be a seventh and eighth grade basketball coach under Carter?
Oh, good question. You're on mute, Mr. Berlin.
We'll have Mr. Carter on the call next week because I don't know the answer to that.
I had one more question for Mr. Berlin.
Was that okay, Mr. Mattson? Head nod would be okay? All right. Yes, Mr. Blazer. Thank you, Madam Proxy, Mrs. Pound.
Mr. Berlin, in the document that you shared, I was trying to read it, it said like step one, two, three, four, are those sort of like red, green, yellow phase as far as phasing into getting back to normal sports?
Yeah, it's coordinated. So like, Steve was talking about the PD's guidance. And I'll post that to the website too, along with the athletic guidance, so people can see it. If they're not aware that exists, but yeah, they work in parallel. So our health and safety plan has to have a red zone plan. Then we have to have a yellow zone plan and a green zone plan. And of course, in red zone, online instruction is only allowed. Can't bring the students as per those guidelines. Yellow, you can bring students in and green, you can bring students in, provided that you have a board-approved health and safety plan, which that's what we're going to be working on over the next couple of weeks.
And thus the July meeting.
Yeah, that's, I just think that's really important. So the people have time to digest it.
Okay, thank you. Those three items will be on the agenda for next week under athletic and extracurricular. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Oh, Andy, sorry. I had a question.
Mrs. Pekovic.
I was just waiting my turn. This was for Mr. Berlin, and if it's going to be a Mr. Carter thing, that's fine if he's going to be here next week, but I know that they usually have signups for fall sports in the spring and we weren't there at school. So my my kids haven't signed up and neither is anyone else. So the coaches don't have the information they need as far as who's signing up and like phone numbers or emails to send out summer workouts. Whether it's with the whole team or they can start doing some individual things to prepare themselves for the August season. So that's just like a concern that's been going on lately.
Okay, so we want to know from Mr. Carter what the coach evaluation process is. And we want to know how signups and that information is going to be handled.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Was there anything else mentioned tonight?
I, I'm wondering, like, how to, when are the coaches going to be contacted as far as like the guidelines and when they can begin things?
Okay. And then Tara, did you have?
Just the question that Sean had with the seventh and eighth grade basketball coach.
Okay, good. All right, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Ken, would this necessitate an athletic committee meeting next week? Or do you just want to do it in the regular meeting?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we're going to have a half hour next week for the safety and security report. Well, I mean, Josh is going to kind of handle his questions and do some reporting during the meeting, so we could do an athletic committee if you wanted. It'd probably be more appropriate.
Yeah, I would like to see that happen.
Would we want to move the executive session from six to 6:30 so then people can join the committee meeting at 6:30 to seven?
Sure.
Okay.
That's done. Okay, Mr. Berlin, Mrs. Newfer, does that mess you up too much?
That's fine.
So next week, executive session will be at six. Athletic and extracurricular committee meeting at 6:30. Okay, now those three athletic and extracurricular items be on the agenda for next week. Four items under miscellaneous, the Kidder Media Agreement for the newsletter production, the surplus items, the Student Assistance Program Agreement, and the Safe Harbor Behavioral Health Agreement. Any question or discussion on the four items under miscellaneous? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Mr. O'Donnell, anything from Erie County Technical School to report?
Nothing to add.
Okay, I'll give a brief report from the IU. We met on Wednesday, May 27th. The IU has a little different calendar than school districts. I was re-elected as vice president for the IU Board. And at that meeting, I was also appointed to chair the search committee for the executive director. So I have undertaken that responsibility as well. There are some hard times coming on the IU. We currently furloughed two occupational therapists. And that is due to declining student enrollment. And then we also furloughed 22 early intervention aides due to COVID-19. So those aides provide direct service to students and since we're not in school, the IU is not providing those services, those aides were all furloughed. They were all part-time, but they were all furloughed. And then our next meeting will be June 24th. So any questions for me on the IU? From the IU? Okay, brings us to board correspondence and dialogue, and I'll start. This is the time I would normally announce that I attended commencement and along with Vice President, Mrs. Amanda Farrell, we excitedly distributed diplomas, but I'll still give a short report to see I viewed the commencement exercises and a heartfelt congratulations to the class of 2020. I thought that was very nice to honor the students that way. Kudos to the kids, their families, their teachers, the administration, all of their supporters for finishing up this school year. I'd also like to recognize one more time, all the efforts put forth by our students, parents, families, teachers, administrators, secretaries, custodians, food service employees, all of our other staff that helped out, that all contributed in their own special ways to making the best of this difficult situation as the school year ended. So huge thankful, huge thank you to all those people involved. And then we look forward to seeing what's going to come in the fall. So that's my contribution to board correspondence and dialogue. Anyone else?
I just have a quick question. Yeah, so with the meeting that we're adding for July, are we adding a work session and a school meeting? We're adding both?
Yes.
So that works. Okay, thanks.
Mr. President, this is Amanda. I just had one comment too.
Yes, thank you for your help distributing diplomas as the Vice President, Mrs. Farrell.
You're welcome. As I had noted before, I was sad that I couldn't actually be there. But I also wanted to just thank the people who put together the work into that. I felt very bad that those students couldn't be there and have a live audience to walk in front of, but as a parent of younger kids, I really enjoyed watching commencement with them. It was actually a really neat experience. So I think that I hope that this scenario does not have to be played out again. But it might be something that's interesting to think about for the future of having it somehow that people outside can watch it too. It was, it was, I think, the students who spoke did a fantastic job. And I think it's really cool for younger Seneca students to be able to see what what that experience is like and what those students are saying. So something I think to keep in mind, but definitely kudos to everyone who who put that project together.
Definitely. We too, we watched as a family and that would be the only opportunity my children would have because there's never any extra tickets for them just to come and see. So that was pretty neat, nice family experience for us as well. Anything else under board correspondence and dialogue this evening?
I have something. It's Julie.
Yes, Mrs. Pekovic.
I thought it was really well done and it was really nice to see. And so everyone who put all that work into it, it's just a nice pat on the back. It was really nice. But also, like Amanda just said, what about those family members, godparents, grandparents that live out of town? Don't have tickets or just can't get here. What a nice thing to do is to put it online for them to be able to watch it either in real time or, you know, the next day or whatever. I think that's awesome. So nice job, everyone.
Sure. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order from the board?
And sorry, Mr. President, I do have one more comment.
Yes.
I also want to thank the administration for following the rules that were set out on it. I know that there's been a lot of pushback on what other districts have done and, you know, they haven't been reprimanded for it and I just, I commend our administration with sticking to what was actually allowed. I think that every day we have staff that really try to instill into our students to do what is best and to do what is right. And I think that following what was set is very admirable of of our administration who stuck to that. So I just want that to be noted.
Thank you very much. I concur, Mrs. Farrell. Thank you for those remarks.
Thanks. Very much appreciated.
Yeah, I agree. I'm so glad they follow what our government is saying and not whatever we want to do.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. We are adjourned. The work session is now over. Thank you for those people that attended as attendees and we wish everyone a good night.